Good morning. They've called the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, July 19th, 2021 to order. First, order of business, pledge allegiance, Charlie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Thank you, Charlie. All right. Item two, public forum. There's no members of the public here with us today in the meeting room today. Is there anyone, Trace? Is there anybody in the other than what I see on the screen? Our popularity is diminishing once again. With that, I'll move on to item three, and that's to approve minutes. Three dot one would be the July 6th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions, changes, et cetera? I had none.
We're all set.
Good. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Follows, abstentions, recuses, very none, motion carries. Item number four, Finance Director, Mary Jane Nalvis. Who is here, first? All right, Mary Jane.
Good morning. So this morning, I'm presenting preliminary numbers for June 30. Obviously, our audit is underway. We already had the auditors in last week for a few days. Next month, I'll be reporting on final. So, and as you see, there's a lot of work we need to do between now and then. Anyway, we're going to start with revenues. We are at 100.2%. We were at 100.9% last year at this time. Very pleased to be reporting those numbers this year. Could have been so much worse. A number of our departments brought in more than budgeted, thankfully. You know, we had a booming real estate market. You see that in the town clerk's office. Golf, obviously, has really outshone itself this year. We had the energy performance contract rebates, which helped too. And just overall, new construction and work being done during COVID. The building department and related type of areas, we're very busy because of that. So thankfully, we will not need to use the fund balance that was budgeted for last year to cover those revenues, so.
The police is just basically some of most of this construction?
Yes, it's all services and all special duty services in the police department.
Can I just touch on that, because I get a lot of questions about that subject? The, it's a contractor or the state even comes in and requires a police officer at a particular construction location on one of our roads, right? It may be that that officer is getting overtime.
Correct.
And all those charges go back to the?
Correct. We have special duty rates.
Okay.
Not only are the contractors or whoever it is asking for it, paying for the police officer, we have a charge for the vehicle if they have the car. And we also, over the last few years, have been adding an administration fee. So the goal is that the cost of all of this special duty does not touch the taxpayers. It's all on the people requesting that service, whether it's ever source connected water, the state.
I mean, it's an important service. Obviously, the road work and the utility work needs to be done. All that's good. So it doesn't show up, though. So it may, the expenditure side may increase, but it comes back in a revenue item someplace.
And it's a general fund, not in a special fund.
Correct. It's all in the general fund. Yes, that's why we're seeing it here.
Okay. So in this case, it's in that Public Works line?
No, special duty, the police.
Oh, it's in the police. So it's in the police revenue line?
Correct.
Okay, fine. Got you.
That makes up the extra 40% of Public Works.
Yeah.
That's all stump dump.
Goodness gracious.
Storms and all of that's all stump. We had already brought in all of our revenue in the first quarter, in the first half of the year. That's all stump dump revenue.
Thanks for backing up my uncertainty, Charlie.
All right, so I was thinking of this percentage of budget.
No, no, no.
Percentage of revenue.
Correct, yes. Yes, that's all revenue.
I'm trying to figure out later, 50% increase in their budget. One of the wrong businesses.
Any other questions? So that's good. It was the revenue was up by over $400,000, so we do not need to make the transfer to $250,000.
Yes.
And it still leaves us with $241,000 surplus of our excess revenues over.
Right.
Which is lower, honestly, it's lower than it has been with all the past few years.
We started out big time on the others, so we made up to that.
Hence my, I am very thankful for other departments.
How does next, the assets here money for revenue?
Copy fees, yeah.
But again, it's 60%, but it's not a big number.
No, correct.
This is a lot less people were coming in.
You see a 60% increase, you know, it's a, you see.
And then from the tax collector standpoint, obviously, at this point, last year, typically in that 105 or 106 range. So this year, 101, 100.1, 106. That's a half a dollar difference right there, right? So the, our ability to grow the grant, the grants on the other side, an allocated fund balance making more limit this year. Wait to see what happens on the expenditure side.
Yeah, you know, we will, between now and my next report in July, there will be some adjustments in revenue. But pretty much, you know, most of the revenue is in on the expenditure side. That's where we'll see the biggest difference because we're paying bills off through July and the first week of August, you know, for last year. But most of the revenues are probably in, so you won't, you won't see that number change, you know.
So I'm trying to recall the increase in our, you know, our budget was about $1.5 million last year. Yeah, that's now last year, for the year 21 is the last year. And to maintain our 10% on that allocated fund balance target, we'd need to be able to transfer to 250 or so. A little bit short here, let's see what happens.
We can, we can just maintain that. It will be, it'll be a win for all of us for last year, absolutely.
We'll talk a little bit later about the session here, about the rating agencies.
Any more questions on revenue or? So on the expenditure side, you know, we are at 99.1%. We were at about 97.8% last year. The last meeting, I spoke about a lot of departments that were going to be over until we made some transfers. So I was going to not include those in my report and only talk about new ones, but certainly I can answer questions on anything. So Town Clerk's Office is now over for the end of the year. It's due to additional recording expenses, which is due to the booming real estate, which you'll see they brought in far more in their revenue than they did in the expense, on the expense side. But, you know, we budget an average year of recording expenses. And when we have a year like this, it only makes sense that that particular line will go over. So we will need to address that, you know, next month. Natural Resources is overdrawn. There is a large encumbrance left for tree services, and we are trying to dwindle that down in the hopes that that would not be over. But again, lots of tree issues. It goes back to your stump dump revenue. It only makes sense that if the residents had so much tree debris, that's so with the town, you know, need these services. So a lot of it is because of natural disaster, so to speak, like Isaiah said, all of that, but also just our regular tree maintenance. But we're hoping that that, if that budget is over, that it may not be over as, as much it is now.
And I just want to give some credit to them. He is not a terrific job worker. We never supposed to get them to step up to significantly more than they've done in the past, particularly in North Coford, where our hours are far more frequent than most folks are willing to tolerate. And he has been very responsive to a few neighborhoods who have consistently been impacted by storms with the trees. And there's also the ash for the dead, a lot of dead trees is part of the ash for disease that's claimed so many trees throughout the north. So that, that number may well be fully extended by the time we're done.
The next is a golf course showing overdrawn by the end of June. Many of the items in the golf course are, again, directly related to the increase in their services with more people. There's more maintenance. There's more concession stand money, there, you know, expenses. There's more bank fees as people are using credit cards. So again, we see an increase on the revenue side in many of our departments, but it corresponds to the need to have more expenses on the other side. The communication budget is overdrawn. I did speak to the chief. We did find some COVID-related expenses in there that we will be moving out. So at the end of the year, it should not be overdrawn in communications. And if you look in communications, the telephone line is, looks grossly overdrawn. We did find that there were some errors in where things were posted, so that we will be cleaning that department up before we finalize the year. Public Works is overdrawn at the moment. Again, there are a number of purchase orders we're working with them on. Hopefully, we can balance that budget before we finalize things. But overall, on the town expense side, we have a balance of $432,000 left to, that can be spent. And that's even without transfers that we could be bringing in for the capital lines. So I don't, I don't ever expect our bottom line budget on the expenditure side to go over, but we'll have to really see where we stand as to how much excess there'll be at the end of the year as a surplus. So we'll be managing that as we go forward, so.
Encumbrances, obviously, the public encumbrances, not both, but the, or the capital, is the capital, is the capital.
Correct, correct. So I'm expecting all of those to be, the capital purchase orders stay in place because they, it's not items that were, they're not blanket purchase orders or anything. It's for specific items. And we do, even in a normal year, we kind of tend to wait towards the end of the fiscal year to do our capital. This year, more than ever, we needed to hold off some of our capital because just in case, just in case. So I've been working over the last month since probably the end of May with our departments to go through all the capital lines, seeing what we could do, seeing what we might need to carry over, but making sure that all of our needs are met. So they, I think they have some.
And part-time salaries.
I was just going to say, I didn't want to say from last year, from last summer, yes. That's what I was going to say. Look at it first.
And also, the sculptures.
So I think the medical report, I gave you a hard copy because it got missed. Daughter sent me a text this morning. She, I think we missed the medical report, so I made you copies. We had a low month of claims in June, which we've been seeing higher, higher claims the past couple of months. And that can also be timing, you know, the end of June may not quite be in there. So again, it might adjust just a little bit, but probably not too much. It does bring our anticipated surplus up to just shy of $500,000. Stock loss is, makes up a portion of that. It's only just over 50%. So we, you know, we've had, obviously, we didn't make our, we have a 70% target on stock loss. Didn't make that this year. You know, certainly the way we budget is, is appropriate for stock loss and that, you know, in a normal year, it shows that it's working, you know. So again, we still don't know the true long-term effects of COVID on the level.
It will be interesting to track the ISL premiums as we go into the next budget year. Because I think typically, we've seen increases in the premiums as we have benefited from the coverage that we've got. I love it. So it's just to see whether our flat line or the even profit.
Right, exactly. Yep. The year that we're in, right now, budgeting is just the same because we're looking at the past few years, but you're correct, the next few years.
I did notice that the administrative fees were significantly higher for June.
It's, a lot of the fees are quarterly?
Mm-hmm. Well, you can see it does appear to jump to August then.
Yeah, so some of the fees are quarterly and some are monthly.
August jumped because they didn't have July, same thing with February.
I see.
But you will see the quarterly fees.
Okay. So another happily known is with estimated fund balance, that of the incurred but not yet realized of 6.6 million. So I think, we've already made it, so appeals and, I imagine, for the finance if they consider not to continue to use the excess funds there to help fund our liability. So I would not be bashful. I'd be going for another million dollars for them. I'm not sure how you guys feel about that.
What you're going to ask, what kind of number you?
Well, we did last year a million. That still, that still leaves us with 5.6 million there, as you may recall. Consultants are saying, either two to three times our monthly expense. That certainly keeps us well within that range. Gives us, and an additional cushion. So that, I'll open a million out there tonight.
Now that we've officially set up open trust and all of that kind of stuff, do you think, how much experience will we have to accomplish before they give us some projections?
Projections on, on what, on our contributions? Well, I already have projections on what the contributions would be over a five to seven-year timeframe, laddering it up year over year. Each time we consider putting more money into that, it changes that projection. So we're starting, based on what I have now, we'd be starting out at about the 200,000 range, 200 to 300,000, but ramping up to about a million every time we, this, another million put in for the following year would certainly change the projections.
I mean, a million, it looks good.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And you think that as it levels off, it's going to be in that $4 billion starting out?
At least, yes.
As a, as a budgeted line item, a general fund, to start filling in that over that trust?
Yep.
Or start penciling it in.
So, and because we're using the excess in the medical, you haven't seen us come forward with a request for another line item for OPEB. And if this trend continues, you know, we may, we keep holding that off, so.
Yeah, I personally think we ought to, it ought to be in the budget cycle, in the budget process. We can make the decision whether or not to fund it, but I think we ought to leave it in there.
Absolutely. Yeah, we clearly, we couldn't bring that forward for this time because OPEB trust is not in place, so.
But now that it is.
Now that it is, it needs to be a line item, correct. It's exactly what we were.
So I can represent that this, to see, respectfully request the dollars to allocate.
Do you need a motion on that or?
Anyone?
It only lends support from the board as if nothing else, yes.
No, half a second. Any further discussion? Very none. I'm trying, it's all in favor. All those, abstentions, very none, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for the support.
You have a couple other things I'd like to talk about. So at this evening's Board of Finance meeting, if you're sitting at near a computer sometime around 7:30, Bill Lindsey, who is our financial advisor, is making a presentation to the Board of Finance on the bonding process, how we do it, why we do it, who the players are. And it's going to be the first thing after public comment. So it's a presentation that he'll be giving to them this evening. On top of that, as an added bonus, we are coming forward with another refunding opportunity that we did last year. So I, I forgot to tell Tracy to put this on your, on your board back, but if you go on the Board of Finance meeting, you'll find this. And I'm just bringing to you now, even though it's going to be presented at the Board of Finance, because at your next meeting, we are going to have the resolution for this. But we're looking to refund our 2015 bonds, which is, majority of it is the high school, but there are other projects for the town and the Board of Ed. We're refunding about $20 million, $20 million in bonds at a savings of $2.6 million over, over the term of the bond, going down to 1.16% interest rate that we're, our average is, is about three on where we are now, so.
What is the term of the?
It's going to. 15 years. In 2036.
So the new term?
The new term is ending 2036, yes.
Oh, the new term?
New term. Yeah, we, when we refund bonds, typically keep the same term. Yep, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Stretching it out, we're simply refunding.
Yeah, we're just paying less each year. So how's this affect the '21, '22 budget? We have a save, estimated savings about $150,000 in the current year. Because it's just an interest. It's just, you know, it's just half of an interest payment this year.
So what is it doing for '22, '23?
Every year is about $179,000.
Savings.
Savings.
Maybe that goes to OPEB. It's flexibility, so.
Right. So again, I think you have access to Board of Finance or PAC, correct?
Yes.
So this report is on there. I apologize for not having it.
Well, that's a great announcement that folks have made. That's a kind of a mysterious process, I think, for a lot of people. Very helpful, but I'd rather tune in tonight.
Are there others that are close? The reason I ask is that this is going to turn.
Every year, we have the opportunity to look at something. It's not always in our favor.
My question, though, is, I know we can look at it every year, but can we accelerate?
No, they have to be within the call period. There are very strict rules, which is one of the things Bill Lindsey said to us. He said, last year, when they came to the Board of Finance with this, the first thing they said was, well, let's do more. But we can't. It's not like your mortgage where you could do it every year if you wanted to. We have specific call dates.
If there were small ones that were near turning down, you couldn't pay them off.
If they fall with, if they're, if they're small and there's not much left, we've probably passed our call date already. They're a real specific.
Also, call date.
Is right within the bonds. When we buy bonds, those are, it's right in there. It tells us when we're allowed to, to call for a refunding.
But it also applies to paying them off. In other words, the difference between refinancing and paying them, paying it out.
Oh, we could, certainly, we could pay, we could pay them out, yes. We definitely pay out of the, right, right. Yeah, I suppose.
And you have, if you're paying it out, is he paying it out at just the principal or is it, is it the remaining payments?
I don't think there's a penalty to pay it. I've never paid off a bond earlier without, without refunding. That can be a question for Bill Lindsey. I'm afraid I keep, I don't want to answer that question.
I mean, I don't know how many we got in how large you are. Yeah, it'd be an interesting question.
Right. But at this point, we're really only paying principal, so it's really not benefiting us to pay off bonds that are only a little bit left, because even if we only, we're still paying off.
If they're not slowing it down for you.
Right, you know, so certainly not a.
It's an exercise worth taking.
Absolutely, absolutely. But so this is, Bill Lindsey is presenting this to the Board of Finance tonight, but because it is a refunding, it is, it is solely the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen, which is why I'm bringing it to you this morning. So because, because the Board of Selectmen has the authority to actually do the bonding. The Board of Finance says, okay, you know, we have, we're going to allow you to spend the money. You guys get to do it.
It's a good idea. So we are only one decade indebted.
Correct, correct. So with the refunding, we're not indebted to any more additional debt. It's the same debt. So a simple, yes, it's, but a simple resolution just by this board allows us to go ahead and do that. But because it's the Board of Finance function, you know, for the funding that we are bringing it to them. It, it just fell into place. Bill Lindsey was coming tonight to give them the presentation they asked for. So I said, hey, let's, let's, let's hit, you know, hit them with this at the same time.
It's made you trip, what's what?
That's right, that's right. So, but I just wanted to make sure you were all aware. But again, 7:30 tonight, if you're on. You know, I can certainly provide you with the presentation and you'll see it, even if you can't.
You can record it, right?
Yes, yes, so good. Other than that, no.
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about our ratings polls last week.
So we are in the middle of going to, for a bond sale this month. We are selling $300,000 worth of bonds, which is primarily, well, it's all covering expenses we've already incurred, mostly on the, on the Board of Ed side and a couple of small things on the town side from the last year. We had both of our rating agency calls with Bill Lindsey last week. They went very well. I think, you know, Matt and I have got it down, you know. We also managed to look at the presentation. We, it's so easy to talk about Guilford and how well we manage our finances, how well we work together, all the boards and commissions, our department heads. And we got a very good compliment from one of our.
Yeah, S and P at the conclusion, one of the, said, I just want to take that, to compliment you. Preparedness, professionalism, and then just the manner in which you were conducting business. Said, we don't, we don't see many as well prepared as what you had in Guilford and Mary Jane did. Most of the work, I get, you know, I get. I get to commit, yeah, to talk about Guilford and, but Lindsey said, he was like, for it, you were on a conference call.
So when we, when we got off the conference call, we said, does that normally happen? He said, never. It's a huge, never.
Yes, congratulations.
Yeah, it was really, it was a woo-hoo for us.
We'll share the presentation with you guys. Then we use the.
Yeah.
My Ted Smartville.
I do compliment you and congratulate you, but, you know, to ask that same question, though, you know, I don't know. Maybe we can use it as a question tonight for Lindsey. How do, how do we compare to the rest of the state? I mean, I know we've worked hard to keep our financial situation in check and whatever had, and not put things on to future generations or anything. How do you feel for how we compare to the rest of the state?
And we are, we're in the top 15 to 20% across the state. Financial, yeah, in terms of the ratings, AAA plus for, I think, never regarded the difference.
Is that the only real measurement is the ratings?
The rating, yes.
Yeah, and, and we're.
The outlook, they talk about outlook as well.
Right. And, and we've asked Bill Lindsey, gee, is there anything we can do to increase our ratings? But we really can't. We are at, at the pinnacle of where a town like Guilford would be. There are a lot of larger things and perspectives to really get, to get higher.
Well, the answer to that question is the biggest worry. I mean, you're at that level. There's only one direction to go, so you got to be very, you're.
You're a major.
Absolutely.
And one of the, one of the factors goes into is the amount of debt that you have. That is, that is part of the rate at the ratings. Right now, we are at one of those times. That, that is, that is part of the rate, of the ratings, right now, we are at one of those times in our history where we have a chunk of debt, because we were paying off the high school, the largest, you know, the largest expenditure this period has had. So that, that is a component of this.
Yeah, and, and I think that one of the largest things I look at is management. If something happened and we had to wipe out our fund balance, that doesn't mean our rating would go down. It's how we manage that, it, it's how we prepare for it, you know, and when you have that fund balance, we show all of our other funds, you know, the medical fund, the land use, the, the land acquisition fund, all these other funds that we have that if we had some major catastrophe, we have liquidity, you know, and, and that's a major component. Not so much how much you have in the bank, and that, clearly that is a part of it, but it's, we spend a lot of time on the rating hall talking about the management, you know, continuity of our boards and commissions, how long your finance director has been here. You know, a lot of it, it all plays in, management plays a key role, how we manage, and that's what they told us at the end. How we, not you guys are great, we love you, you know, you're wonderful, how you manage your funds was a key component.
Is it a factor in its grand list?
It, it's a factor, but it's.
It's a wealth profile in our ability.
Yeah, and, and again, it's continuity, if, if, if we were, you know, one percent, one percent, one percent, minus twenty percent, you know, what happened, you know? But we could be zero for twenty years, and that's not.
Growth.
Growth, growth, zero percent growth, right, you know, that would not necessarily be a negative to us. It would be how we, again, it's how we manage, either the growth or the loss.
Grand list as a percentage of, well, it's the taxpayer, I mean, you raise, raise all you will, but if you don't have any basis, so what?
Correct, and when you look at the presentation, I believe there's a page on the equalized grand list, the amount per capita and how, and at the bottom, there's a, a table that shows how we.
It's about, it's about two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, how, how we are up against the state and the, the nation.
So we, is that the fifteen percent general level in there too?
I don't know the percentages, but you'll see that.
Interesting number to know where we stand.
But you'll see that, like I said on that, I, I, I can't quote the, the numbers, but I can, I can see the slide in my head.
That'd be a good one to do.
Was there any feedback specifically, you know, formal or informal, about the creation of the OPEB trust?
Oh, oh, yes, we, we've been, correct, so obviously, once the OPEB liability hit all the towns' financial reports, that became a question. And so for the, for the last three years, I've been, you know, I, I've been promising it, you know, I've been saying, you know, that it's something we're looking into, you, you know, that we had the support of both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, obvi- and obviously to do that. Last year, we said, yep, we're, you know, we're all ready to go, and then Copenhagen, you know, absolutely, absolutely. A, a, a huge part of, again, showing the management, you know, less the liability, more the management and how we're dealing with it. It all comes back to that, but absolutely, I, I felt great being able to tell the rating agencies this year that we finally had it approved. They knew we had the one point two million dollars in our budget the last couple of years, because we always pointed to that and said, say that, that's proof, we're, we're looking at our, at our OPEB, and the, and I reported, you know, next year when we're dealing with the rating agencies, that one point two million dollars, we're already being in our fund, it'll already be active, we're already moving forward and we'll have even more to report to them. I can talk about how wonderful Guilford is and everybody, keep asking those questions, those are good.
Yeah, I think it's really important that, you know, we, we struggle to make the decisions, are, are you, or planning. I mean, we're not kicking a hand down the road, I mean, you think huge sports.
Yeah, and, and some of the things we talked about in that rating agency presentation are right to that point. You'll see, we have a slide that shows how our undesignedated fund balance was, you know, very low and how we worked to, to bring that up. We talked about the medical fund and how in twenty thirteen we were in a deficit and we were able to bring that up. So those are all things that we talked to the rating agencies about, and, you know, they're.
One of the interesting areas that the rating agencies are starting to focus on now is, is that Bill gave us a heads up on this prior to this climate change, particularly coastal resilience for community workers. So we referenced the coastal resilience plan in two thousand and fifteen. The fact that we had actually completed three major projects on that, on that plan. And also, we have the, the, this board, Board of Finance, we have about seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in reserve fund for coastal resilience projects. That was some of the surplus that we allocated over time, so those are the kind of things. And interestingly, climate change and coastal resilience are part of, of their, their concern and inquiries.
Especially.
And it could be, well, obviously, unexpected costs. But I don't know if anybody saw the article in newspaper, for DeHaven, they're basically going to build a seawall on the ninety-five border, you know, on the harbor, basically, I think, I don't know how high it is, but like, wow. Because they've been talking about that kind of preventative measures.
It's been a conversation, if you don't mind, before the word, the building that's right there. In that building, it's not all of the controls, but a lot of the controls for maintaining water supply, those things, and that's been a long, we discussed, I don't know, because, it's real, yeah.
And the, the last item there, all we're talking about is cybersecurity, that, that's, that's a big issue as well, so we were able to.
We were able to satisfy any concerns there. Correct, anything else?
I didn't suppose to say that out.
Well, no, we, we satisfied their concern.
Right, we answered, we answered their questions, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Item five, Public Works Director Tom Philly is five dot one. And that is, okay, discuss take possible action on the purchase of Ford Portable Rotary List Vehicle Service Group off of state NASPO, Tom, good morning.
Good morning. These are four units that are capable of eighteen thousand pound lift per, per unit. The crew, we, we had figured before when we, we got some last year that we needed a, a couple more like that, another group like that, so that we can utilize the, one of the bays that we weren't utilizing before, because we didn't have a lift in there. So these are also transferable to the new Public Works facility later on. And they're comparable with, with the ones that we have now. So this would allow us to be doing a ten wheeler in one bay and also a six wheeler in another bay, or something other than that, you know, pickup truck or whatever. The quote was for thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and fifty-nine cents from NASPO, it's a state bid.
Great, thank you, Tom. Tom, do you, Tom, do you remember, do you recall what the total budget item was, the total that we had?
How much was it?
Is this, yeah, is this coming in under budget, at budget, or?
This would be, I would say, coming in under budget. Because I think, I'm, I'm almost sure that we had over forty thousand dollars for that.
Thought I remember that number, yeah. And, and Tom, it says four units, but that's really to service one vehicle, right, you need?
That's right, takes four, for these lifts to service one vehicle, but it's a ten wheeler, we, you know, capable of lifting, not a ten wheeler, a, a six wheeler. So that's where we need them, and not only that, we found that we have issues down here with, with room, so these are also transferable to our warm garage over there, and we can do work in the warm garage. So it, it gives us a lot of versatility.
Great, okay, and the safety and, and security of these items, it's comparable to a fixed unit?
Definitely, if, if not even overrated, I mean, they're, they're very good, we have no issues whatsoever.
Great, terrific, thanks. Thank you, Tom, any further questions or comments?
You see any more, I mean, we repaired one last one, last year you got one, and you see any more lifts coming down, right?
No, this, this should be it, we should be satisfied on everything that we need over there, the other ones being fixed, you know, the, the, the post ones being fixed.
All right, so is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Second, any further comments, questions, very good, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Both staying, recusers, very good, motion carries, Tom, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, have a good day.
Got it, all right, item six, consider take possible action on the purchase of a Ford Escape Hybrid from Jengers Ford off the state contract. Full disclosure, this is for the use of the first eleven, as you may recall, we had, and last, this is actually coming out of the twenty-twenty-one capital budget. I had refrained from moving forward with that purchase while we were waiting to see what capital looked like. This is coming in a little bit over budget, which is not surprising, given the demand for vehicles, I don't know if anybody's seen the, the impact on, on pricing. And we had thirty thousand, but the important part here, I think, is this is a hybrid vehicle. And I, I have said at a couple, a couple, a couple of the budget sessions, we need to start focusing, we have to adopt some of the, you know, environmentally friendly technology, excuse us the opportunity, and so I'm putting that, we're putting the money where my pockets. And it was, again, this was approved as part of our capital. Any questions?
Do we need the options?
It's the only one that's available, yeah, it's the only one off the contract, and it'll probably be six to eight months from getting here.
Okay.
So is the Escape similar to the old Explorer?
No, it's a neck size down, that sort of, yeah, it's like, it's like the size of a CRV, maybe a CRV or that model. Very similar.
And that'll work, I mean, this is the first time that I remember ever purchased a new vehicle, it was like, we've always had hand-me-downs. As I always said, hand-me-downs that have worked, and so I'm assuming this is going to last a while.
I was going to say, like. The vehicle I'm driving today is a two thousand eight, they bought that in two thousand seven, she's been. Ready, y'all got it, I'm going for a number of years, and there's sixty-seven thousand miles, we still can't get the check engine light to go off.
But that's pretty much my question, is this too light of a vehicle for us to anticipate being able to get ten years of?
I think this is, this is like the middle of their sort of SUV line Ford, they have just a couple smaller units and they have the.
So you're comfortable with that, right? Just when you said it's the only one available.
Well, this, the only Ford Escape we could get our hands on, and, and it's a twenty-one, so we're not buying a twenty-two in a mile. Has the advantage of all-wheel drive. And, and all-wheel drives, we're making for snow, it's. Right.
Yeah.
And the gas mileage, excuse me, it could be twice what you were getting on the Explorer, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, maybe more than twice.
It seems like a sensible moderate choice, and being hybrid is huge, so.
All right, so is there a motion? I'll make the motion, second.
I'll say.
For comments, questions, very good, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Both stay, users hearing, very, thank you, thank you very much. All right. Item seven, discuss to take possible action on the noise variance application. We have or what is it, Kelly Bozenberg, you take, please, let's take five minutes.
That would be, that would be good, all right.
Case just want to hold the recording at this point? Excellent. Okay, we were on item seven, discuss to take possible action on the noise variance application. The applicant is Kelly Bozenberg, it's a wedding of Alex Bozenberg and Nick Maralongo at seven oh six Lucille Road, the, the date is August seventh, twenty-one, and the time is four to ten P M. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this request.
Second, second, any comments or questions? The application seems thorough, and it's, and it's, and it's been through, and it's been approved by the police department, so.
Yeah, it's already signed off.
Already signed off, but let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, intentions, recusals, very good, motion carries. Item eight, eight dot one, act on resignation of Peter Bisziski from the Housing Authority, is there a motion with appreciation regret?
I'll move in.
I'll second, second, and let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, intentions, recusals, very good, motion carries. Item nine, request for use of town property. Okay. First, which is the Christ Episcopal Church, place assigned on the green advertising its vacation Bible school taking place August sixteenth to twenty-first. Sign placement will be August sixth through the twentieth, is there a motion?
I'll make.
Yeah, a second, second, I'll try your minds, all in favor?
Aye. No, so yeah.
So that, motion carries. Eight, nine dot two, act on request from the Guilford Arts Center to use the green July fifteenth through seventeen, twenty twenty-two for its craft expo, which includes special provisions as former areas of use. Is there a motion? So, and a second?
I'll second.
The special permission, the, the do not seem to involve alcohol, so that's something that you need to concern ourselves with the police department at this point. So.
And is something that takes place, yeah?
Yes, it is, and, you know, unfortunately, this year, you know, their decision went against the line itself of what was really happening, you know, with, with a lot of them, so they had to make a decision early on, standard for their vendors, but, so let's, all right. Zero motion?
I'll make the motion in a second.
In a second, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Both stay, recusers, very good, motion carries. Item three, act on request of the Human Rights Commission on screen for its cultural arts festival taking place Saturday, January thirtieth, or Saturday, March? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
In a second.
Second.
And they're giving themselves a couple of dates, I think, for the rate, I think, what the rate take.
And again, there doesn't appear to be any alcohol involved.
No.
So that's all in favor?
Yep, so let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, intentions, recusals, very good, motion carries. Item ten, county reports, I don't think there's anything further, I think, beyond what we talked about, the plan for, for that portal housing.
Right.
I think we talked about that the last time, the planning zoning, the, the, the subdivision, so that should be moving forward. I understand that they are anticipating getting, committing all the finances from the Department of Housing, so we're going to work over time. And I noticed in the special fund warrants, there was a, a, involving pit driveway, it's. Cash dance. Yes, they have fifty driveway is now ours. So the, the bidding will now commence between the three departments for the use of that space.
There, there's, had to talk about it.
We actually, we actually have, we have a meeting set up, I think it's for the next one, so Public Works, Park and Rec, and Building Steven Ito's architecture. Right, and art, there's some temporary structures out, down there once, once we get that, yes, drive, the temporarys can go away. The trailer, the trailer that they're using for public park and rec offices. Yep, if, if there's room for that stuff, we will, remember, we approved the, the new facility for police prior to the phase.
Well, either way, it will get plus.
That's, that's exactly.
I mean, if you're ever going to do it, that's, yeah.
Morning, Mr. Holly, how are you?
Good.
Oh, no, I didn't realize.
Oh, we're back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I apologize.
Okay. All right, correspondence, George Groll, they, it's like twelve, any comments, questions on that? So let's see, economic development, housing, right, development committees.
So they're proposing a committee to come up with the proper formats?
Yes.
Okay, and they gave us an example, the Madison women's.
Exactly.
Okay, I mean, I would move to form a committee for that purpose.
Well, I'm sure we need to.
Are they just giving us an update?
Update, yeah, that they're suggesting that we further, we just further research with CCM, and that. An update, yeah, um, that they're suggesting that we further, we just further research of CCM, uh, and that, uh, the Town Council, uh, be, be engaged to prepare some, same sample.
Consider adoption of ordinance, but they haven't, they haven't given us the ordinance to consider yet, they're just giving us the heads off that it's a process. But, okay.
Interesting, uh, the building permits, a thirty period, it's a fifty percent increase last year. But the thing that, that is particularly Kelly next to her was the last time, you know, we were in that thirties was one year prior to two thousand and eight, you know, although what happened in two thousand and eight.
Well, uh, and is that, the new building permits, well, remember, we've got significant other activity going on on Long Hill, right?
These times are just so.
Well, it's coming off twenty nineteen, twenty was only point two, so there, there's a little bit of COVID activity in this.
Yeah, but twenties were a running average for a while.
Yes.
You know, when you get a, a fifty percent spike like that, you gotta say, oh, neither more than the pandemic.
Yep.
But these are exceptional.
And, yeah, Charlie, that's a great, that's a great one, like, uh, curious, forty-seven, that's a, a pretty big number, um, compared to what we've had.
Yeah, I just worried about, we all know what happened in two thousand and eight, uh, yeah, it's.
It's just me. My, my, my memory's not good enough, but was there a major housing development that went in around that time?
In two thousand and eight?
Yeah, because these are all, uh, these are all single family, uh, houses, right?
Yeah.
It's all condos, is it?
Yeah, uh, I think this is, I think this is single families, that, that particular. I'll verify that, though.
Nah, I don't think it's single, it could be anything for the garage.
Well, this is thirty, I'm looking at single family residences, thirty-three issued permits.
Okay.
In the detail.
I think it's an incident.
I mean, a hundred and thirty, in some ways, the total projects would be a more interesting number, it doesn't show up on that. Tom, sure, I don't get into that detail as often as I should, but I, I, I will start looking. Apropos your concerns, Charlie, it's a good idea just to see what, what the trends are telling us.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to change it.
No, nice, nice to see it coming.
I'd say be ready, yeah, look, look, the heads up, get your money out of the market. Uh, okay, old business, anybody have old business?
You can't even change your money tomorrow.
Uh, new business, um, I just wanted to cover a couple of things, uh, we'll, we'll probably delve into this more deeply, but we'll get the full board back together a couple of weeks, but, um, some of the, uh, potential uses for the art funds, uh, our rescue plan funds. And as you know, there are several buckets, uh, many, several of those buckets have to do with municipal, uh, the impacts of municipal operations relative to COVID, so, uh, we'll, I'll have a series of things that we're hoping to spend some, some of those funds on. For instance, uh, greatly expanded the youth and family, uh, summer camp, uh, the program that we're doing with in conjunction with the Board of Education, uh, summer program, summer enrichment program, very important, which is, uh, small, it's, it's recreation, so. Uh, and then also, we're, we're seeing some immediate, some more immediate needs for some, uh, help at youth and family services for counselors. So these funds, you know, these funds can be used to cover those kind of costs, uh, and can be used to cover those costs over a two-year period. So we have some opportunities there. Uh, the other thing I wanted to talk briefly about, provide some more detail on this, Mitch has been working on my behalf, our behalf, uh, with Madison. We're looking at, um, at economic, shared economic development coordinator position, I think we talked about that about a year ago, a year and a half ago. Uh, so, uh, we're actively looking at the development of job description, uh, and, uh, and it rules the road, how that might work. That's another, uh, area where we could use, uh, American Rescue Plan funds, so, uh, we're looking quietly at Madison on that, obviously, we have, there's a COVID here who has expressed interest in that role, very good to work to actually materialize. Uh, but that, uh, we're a little ways away from any decisions on those lines, so, but again, that's another opportunity to use some of these funds and, uh, for, quite honestly, I'm looking at, uh, that opportunity to do that, does a two-year trial, to be funded. Anything above what we currently are spending for economic development, uh, we go, uh, we go from the, you know, the commission. So, um, and then it is just a, a couple of, it's the Guilford Fair Day Parade, uh, is another, uh, opportunity. There's no question that the fundraising bill of the most of the rotary, the most of the fund of the Fair Day Parade, that was dramatically impacted, as well as the, uh, bear itself, so this is an economic development activity, lady. We're not talking about substantial, not, yeah, so. So we'll, we'll delve more into that, and then the last piece, I'm not going to put Pete on the, uh, on the hot seat right now, but, um, it is, it is assumed, uh, and we're going to verify this, but, uh, the use of some of these grant funds, uh, unlike the use of tax payer funds, um, can be determined by the, uh, by the Board Select, because of the legislative body. And, uh, for a charter town like ours, we legislative body is the Board of Select, however, uh, I think we've, you know, one of the hallmarks of what's gone on in this community for a long time is transparency. And, you know, getting the board finances approved, or approved, but acceptance, uh, of some of the decisions we're making, we're applying these funds. I think it would be proven, uh, to have those conversations. So we'll have a more in-depth discussion about it in a couple of weeks. Good, all right, uh, public forum, before we go into executive session, is everyone listening to address the word public forum? Hearing none, uh, is there a motion to go into executive session? Uh, and we're going to invite in, uh, Mitch, Mitch Goldblatt, Ken Wilson, uh, Counselor Barrett, and, uh, Counselor, uh, Chris Hodgson, who is, uh, on the line as well, uh, for the balance of you, thank you very much for your attention today, uh, and with that, is there a motion going?
So.
It's not second. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
In a second?
I'll second.
Uh, let me try your minds on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Those abstaining, accused, hearing none, motion carries. During executive session, we, uh, discussed two, uh, two, uh, contracts. Uh, there were no motions made, no actions taken during executive session, however, as a result of the, um, the discussions, uh, is there a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the successor contract for Fire Chief, Fire Marshal Charles Hershaw, and, uh, for July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and authorize Ken Wilson, Board of Fire Commissioners Chair, to sign on behalf of the town?
I'll move it.
In a second?
I'll second.
And any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Those abstaining, accused, none, motion carries. Next is, uh, take possible, is, uh, take possible action on the agreement between the town of Guilford and the Guilford Employees Association. Uh, and is there a motion to accept, uh, the agreement?
I'll make that motion, second, any further comments?
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Those staying, accused, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, uh, I think we've concluded our business for today, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Jason.